If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Counsel? None. We have a motion to approve.
It's my last day, so I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Rule call, please.
Councilman Atkinson.
Aye.
Mayor Horn.
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock.
Aye.
Councilman Bosberg.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez.
Okay, next we've got awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. We have four items. The first one is Employee of the Month for May 2023, Kristi Ramsey, Secretary of Police of Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and community. It's my honor to recognize Kristi Ramsey, my secretary, as the employee of the month, and I want to read this certificate as follows. In recognition of the outstanding accomplishments and contributions, Kristi Ramsey was hired as a police technician in October of 2020, and just a few short months later was promoted to the position of Secretary of the Chief of Police. Throughout this time, Kristi has proven to be an asset to the police department and the city as a whole. She maintains a very positive attitude and is well-liked by all. Kristi regularly takes additional tasks such as adjusting her work schedule to assist the department needs and community events, covering dispatch when needed, assisting with records, and most recently, learning and taking on human resource functions while another employee is out on leave. Kristi is a loyal and dedicated employee and deserves to be recognized as the City of Colinga's May 2023 of Employee of the Month. And I just want to thank Kristi for all the hard work, and I was worried about six o'clock says, where's Kristi? I'm sending a text to Commander Young. She's working dispatch, so she was relieved at six o'clock, and she works the next couple of days in dispatch because of the vacancies we have. So again, thank you, Kristi.
Do you want to say anything, Kristi?
I just wanted to thank you for the acknowledgement and thank you for trusting me with all the responsibilities, and I'm just grateful to work for you guys.
So I don't want to embarrass Kristi and put her on the spot, but I do want to recognize she's one of the few city employees that has never given me anything with an error on it. Everything that she gives me is always 100% accurate. I've never had to send anything back to her, so I appreciate her attention to detail.
Okay, we'll move on to item number two, presentation of Senate Resolution Honoring Councilman Atkinson, presented by Councilman Bosberg. And I believe this will cover item 32 as well, right?
Okay.
Which is a presentation of a key to the city, Councilman Atkinson, for his leadership during COVID-19, presented by Councilman Bosberg as well.
All right, so we had Melissa Hurtado, Senator from the 16th Senate District, and we have a resolution from the Senate, and I'll just read it real quick. By the Honorable Melissa Hurtado, 16th Senatorial District, relative to commending the Honorable Adam Atkinson, whereas the Honorable Adam Atkinson, a respected member of the Colinga City Council representing District One, has brought credit and distinction to himself through his career and civic achievements and has significantly improved the quality of life within the local community through his efforts and appropriate at this time to highlight his many accomplishments and extend him special honors and the highest commendations. And whereas, born and raised in Orange County, Adam Atkinson graduated from Los Amigos High School before joining the United States Marine Corps, where he joined his discipline, leadership skills, and unwavering commitment to upholding justice and following his honorable discharge. He launched his career as a bounty hunter, in which role he developed a deep understanding of law enforcement, the judicial system, and the importance in maintaining of community and safety. And whereas appointed to the Colinga City Council in 2018 and subsequently re-elected, Adam has realized significant achievements that have positively impacted the local community, including founding the Colinga Police K-9 Foundation, which funded the establishment of the Colinga Police Department K-9 Unit and continues to provide it with financial assistance, and during COVID-19 pandemic, he advocated for policies that offered relief and resources to local businesses. And whereas, among his numerous accomplishments as member of the city council, Adam has helped guide the city out of debt into reserve of more than four million by consistently voting for a balanced budget and prioritizing the financial stability and long-term prosperity of the community. And a staunch advocate for animal rights, he has ardently supported the Give Me Love Animal Shelter. And whereas throughout history, California has benefited immensely from his contributions of public-spirited individuals who, in addition to their daily pursuits, take a keen interest in local affairs, and Adam has participated in numerous enterprises that have left a long-lasting impact on the City of Colinga. Therefore, it be resolved by Senator Melissa Hurtado that she recognizes and thanks Honorable Adam Atkinson for a lifetime of achievements and meritorious services to humanity, conveys best wishes that his indomitable efforts will continue in the years ahead.
I need to say something real quick. I always laugh every time they say honorable, like, do people know who I am? But I definitely want to thank Melissa for doing this for me, and Nathan, I know you put a lot of time and effort into this. I know you want to make this day special for me. I'll have more to say later, but I appreciate that. Thanks, buddy.
All right, and then the next item, you know, Adam did a lot of things from the very time that he was appointed onto council. We had a lot of tough things that we were going through. The city was in debt. We were going through the issue of cannabis. And then we went through the issue of COVID-19, and in order to be a leader during times of adversity and times of pandemics and things like that, it takes a lot. And for someone to stand up and do what they think is right, and at the same time, to try and relate those opinions and listen to the public at the same time, that takes a lot. And for that reason, I want to award Adam the key to the city. And I just want to lastly say that I appreciate everything that Adam's done. I know that, you know, not everyone in town is a fan of everybody, and that makes it even harder. And so I just want to say that I appreciate all the things that you've done for this town, so thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll have more to say later, but I really appreciate this. This is something that I'll have forever. Never in my wildest dreams that I think that I would be standing up here as a city councilman or anywhere else for that matter. It's hard to believe we got one, two, three, four, five mayors here today, five former mayors. It's just amazing, and I appreciate all of you, but I'll have more to say later. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, next item we have is a presentation of honorary City of Colinga flag, presented by CHUSD World History Teacher, Colby Gillette. I believe I pronounced that right. Gillette, okay.
Okay, so hello, my name is Colby Gillette. I'm a teacher at Colinga High School and a citizen of Colinga. I've been teaching AP History this year, and during that time, we've looked at empires from the Mongol Empire in the 1200s to the Zulu Kingdom in Africa and the great American empire we have today. While each of these empires have their differences, there's one thing that they do all have in common, and that is a great flag to unite them. Now, good news, the North American Vexiological Association has nailed down what makes a great flag into five easy guidelines. Keep it simple, make it distinct at a distance, three colors or fewer, symbols, colors, and design should represent something, and the ideal number of words is zero. These are the guidelines that my students had in their most recent assignment. I asked them to take a town that they know, Colinga, and attempt to redesign our city flag. I asked the students if they would like to vote on their favorite. Out of the 30 students I had in my class, we chose 15 to rank, and out of the 15 flags, the one you see in front of you was the top dog. So, and we actually had a different original design, but after speaking with Marissa, she informed me that city code says we have to have the emblem front and center, so there is our emblem, front and center. So yeah, so there's our final result. I'm going to let Sylvia Rios, she was our winner of the, this is her design, so I'm going to let her kind of say a few words about it and what everything means.
Hello, as you heard, I am Sylvia Rios. I am a sophomore at Colinga High School. I am in Mr. Gillette's class. This is my flag. I designed it because I thought it would help to bring unity and a sense of pride to our town. The blue stripe in the middle, I kept the color to keep it matching with the emblem, the original emblem. And I have the stripe in the middle to represent the tragic earthquake that happened way back then, supposed to represent the fault line and the way that, you know, that it cracked and kind of messed everything up. But in the end, we're all to come together, and then I have the sun to represent our climate, which, as you know, is more a hotter climate, and then I decided to keep the emblem, sorry, because we were asked to, and also I think it adds more history and a sense of pride and unity to our flag. And I will now let Samantha speak.
Hi, I'm Samantha Sellers, and I am also a sophomore at Colinga High School. I am as well in Mr. Gillette's AP US, AP World History class. So when we first got assigned this project, we had just finished our AP test, and it was a fun, more fun project. We ended up actually going to all the flags right by the statue and by Rico's to look at how the other states and how other people have designed their flags to get a more deeper understanding of the deep history of flags. So this is what we ended up coming up with. When I had brought this up to a couple of my family members, they did not know that we had a flag. All they knew is we had a city emblem, but they did not know that Colinga had a flag. If you look around town, you cannot find the city flag flying anywhere. Trust me, I've been on the look. So I hope that with this new flag, we can bring a sense of pride and unity to our town and unite people under one flag that is recognizable and is flown all around the city. Thank you.
I think you're good. What I would like to do, if council's okay with it, is I would like to have one of these flags ordered, and then we would display it here at City Hall for a year until his class next year designs a flag, so we would have an honorary flag that the World History class creates annually.
Now, would that go to replace the one that we do have underneath our flag out front?
It wouldn't replace it, but it would be our honorary flag that hangs at City Hall for a one-year period until we have a replacement honorary flag.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, right now, we're going to take a short break, a little recess. We have something for Councilman Atkinson.
There's going to be cake in the lobby.
There will be cake in the lobby. Yes, there will be cake in the lobby. Francisco Ramirez, live in the city of Hanford.
You know, I, I see the clink of chatter, I see all this other stuff, and one thing that I can truly say about Adam is that when it comes to a definition of a leader, it's not based on a title, but by a person's actions. And for me, I know that quite well, is that when you see a person's actions, and they qualify for the citizens that say, hey, he's trying to do every effort in order to make something possible in my community, that's a leader. It's even bigger than a title, because that's respect. So in that process, based on what I seen, from another leader to another leader, I have so much respect for you, Adam. You have done so much for this community. And, you know, the city of Kalinga is going to lose a valuable asset. The city of Kalinga is, you know, it's just gonna be, it's gonna be a, a big hole to fill, so to speak, a gap to fill. And I wish you truly much success on your future and your new journey. I'm happy that you're making that transition, and you're doing what's best for your family. But at the end of the day, you know, all of you, all of us, that's, you know, we serve in some type of local government, you know, people don't see how much we go through in the backgrounds, how much we, you know, pull our heads out, or our hair out, or get gray, gray hair because of this job. So I commend you, all of you guys, and I commend you the most, Adam, because you fought for the community, and you always tried to do what was right in here, in your mind, especially right here in your heart. So thank you.
Shane Strawn, city of Hanford. Come today because of Adam Atkinson. Adam, you and I have known each other for a very long time. The one thing I can say about you is you have been a terrific leader to the city of Kalinga, but you were more of an asset during COVID-19. During that time, you showed probably the greatest of leadership than anyone that I could see throughout the state of California. You were someone who stood beside businesses and the people of this community, and you helped them. You helped them with every need possible by helping them keep their businesses open, and that they can stay in business. Because of you, people had businesses today in the city of Kalinga, and that is something that I think a lot of people will know about Adam Atkinson. It's because of your leadership, your dedication and spirit to the city, the city of Kalinga that made everything possible because of what your leadership did for this city. And you stood the test of time, I have to say, because you took the initiative than, than most people. A lot of people in the state of California caved to the COVID rules. You did not. Your leadership with your council stood firm on good decision-making and helped these people. You said, we're gonna stay open, we're gonna keep it going, and we'll accept whatever penalty comes from the state of California. Not just through COVID-19, but your decisions on the council and to help your community. You were personable, you were someone who could be able to be relatable to the citizens, and you took the time to listen. And I think that's the most important, is listening to the public. And a lot of councils these days don't do that. So that is something that I cherish most from you, is you took the time to listen. The last, what, four or five years that I've known you, you've just been a very personable person. You cared, and you've made some really tough decisions. And the one thing I will tell you is, no matter who fills that seat, they've got, you've got big shoes to fill. So you, you should be commended for all of your, your actions and your leadership that you've committed to the city of Kalinga. And I know that North Carolina is very much gonna be welcoming Adam Atkinson over there, especially near Raleigh. So I've been to North Carolina, I know how it is. It's a beautiful state, so you're very, very lucky. Thank you so much for your tireless leadership to the city of Kalinga, and it's always been a pleasure to know you, and I know that we have many more years of talking and friendship. So thank you so much. You're welcome.
Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Trevon Mann, for the record. This is more of an idea. My wheels are always turning. I love the town since I got here in 2020. Great time to be here, right, 2020? But I, I see a lot of shops and businesses opening, but the one thing I see that Kalinga really needs the most, that we really don't dwell into, and people always talk about it, is entertainment. I saw something on Instagram that really blew my mind. I know people in Kalinga love their guns. I'm not talking about a gun range, this is more safe. There was this company that actually does build-outs for virtual reality rooms, and you can just, like, put on the gear, walk around a big empty space, low on the cost, right? You don't have to put a bunch of stuff together, but just have this big empty space for them to kind of walk around and shoot each other in VR. There's a lot of big empty rooms here in Kalinga, so that's just an idea that they're out there. I thought that was really cool, and I didn't know who to talk to at the time, but I felt like this was the perfect moment to do that. So there's an idea. If you want to talk to me about it, I can send a link to what I saw. All right, peace.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Trevon Mann, for the record. This is more of an idea. My wheels are always turning. I love the town since I got here in 2020. Great time to be here, right, 2020? But I, I see a lot of shops and businesses opening, but the one thing I see that Kalinga really needs the most, that we really don't dwell into, and people always talk about it, is entertainment. I saw something on Instagram that really blew my mind. I know people in Kalinga love their guns. I'm not talking about a gun range, this is more safe. There was this company that actually does build-outs for virtual reality rooms, and you can just, like, put on the gear, walk around a big empty space, low on the cost, right? You don't have to put a bunch of stuff together, but just have this big empty space for them to kind of walk around and shoot each other in VR. There's a lot of big empty rooms here in Kalinga, so that's just an idea that they're out there. I thought that was really cool, and I didn't know who to talk to at the time, but I felt like this was the perfect moment to do that. So there's an idea. If you want to talk to me about it, I can send a link to what I saw. All right, peace.
Thank you.
I wasn't gonna say anything. I was just gonna sit back there and just shut up. When I first met you, I thought you were gigantic. You know what? Right? I know, I remember. And I remember the time when you and I first decided that we were just gonna put everything in the past and just build on what we had in common. And I think that we did a good job, and I'm gonna miss you, and I'm very happy for you. And these gray hairs are you. I'm just telling you, this is all you, but I'm gonna miss you, and I consider you a friend.
Anyone else? Scott.
Scott Netherton, Kalinga Chamber of Commerce. Turbey's over, yay. Just wanted to give you an update. It was a great event, great turnout, a lot of positive feedback, obviously always things to work on. But I want to tell you how grateful I am to be able to do this in this town and help represent all of the community. And it's probably one of my favorite things to do, even though if you would have asked me two days ago, I'd have told you completely opposite. But great day, and probably next council meeting, I'll have more information once we get all our final numbers back, but just wanted to say thank you again.
I wasn't gonna speak either, but for the sake of time, I can echo everything that my colleagues over here have said about you, Adam. I'm truly, as I, I told you when it hit me, I think a couple of weeks ago, that you were leaving, like, truly made me sad. So I appreciate everything that you've done for the city of Kalinga from afar. You've been a great example of sticking to your guns on, on what you firmly believe and what's best for the citizens, so I appreciate that, and I'll take that back with me. But I'm truly gonna miss you. League of California City events are not gonna be the same without you. I adore your entire council, but it's just not gonna be the same without you. So I'm gonna miss you. I'm glad that we have a friendship, and that will continue no matter where you go. But thank you so much for your service.
Well, about two years ago, I said I'd never do this again, but here I am. So I just wanted to say to the council, I wish you all the very best, but also I'd like to acknowledge Adam. Adam, you and I have been through the good, the bad, and the ugly, and you stuck to your guns regardless whether we agreed with you or not, and yet you stuck to your guns and you stayed. You could have left on many occasions for various reasons that we both know about. So I wish you and your family the very, very best. And now I'm gonna leave, because I promised my wife I'd be home for dinner. The very best to you, Adam.
You know, hearing all these comments about Adam, you know, it's tear-jerking to us all, right? You know, Adam, you have served our district for a very long time. You're gonna be greatly missed. You don't know how much you have meant to a lot of us in our district. You have done so much. I mean, during the pandemic, I mean, you, like, saved so many businesses. And, I mean, Scott, you know, I mean, so many, and so, I mean, you, you would go up to Sacramento on your own dime when nobody else is following you. And I just wanted you to know, you know, not only have you, you know, served us, but you have also made a lot of relationships, friendships, and made it personal with everybody. And you're gonna be greatly missed. I am proud of, you know, what you have done for us, but I'm also happy for you for your new adventures and what might come of them. I mean, maybe, who knows? Maybe it'll be a city council over where you're going. That would be awesome. I mean, you have all that it takes, and thank you, you know?
Mary Jones, proudly from District One. One thing I'd like to say, everybody's been patting Adam, I'm surprised he can still sit up. It's not just the fact that you stick to your guns, but you also have the innate ability to listen and learn from the people who have other points of view. And I really admire that you're able to, or you seem able to evaluate and reconsider. And I really admire that you're able to, or you seem able to evaluate and reconsider your stance when it's appropriate. Your leadership in building up a pride in our district is weird. It really is. We didn't even have districts when you came. So, you and your pig, you know, you got us. And it's been a hoot, and I know that where you go, you're going to make a difference. And we're very, very fortunate to have had you here, and I know that you have an amazing future. Please try to find time to invest in the people around you, because you really, really make a difference. Thank you.
Anyone else? Scott?
Okay, this time Scott Netherton, business owner, real-time entertainment. Back in May of 2020, I organized a meeting at my theater. I invited the city council, I invited our local law enforcement, and there were about 25 businesses that were there, that were represented. We were meeting in desperation, we were losing everything, some of us. We needed to find a way to keep our doors open. And Adam, being my district rep, I reached out to him, he was there, Chief Levens was there. They answered a lot of our questions. I mean, basically, we were at a point where we're staying open. What are you going to do about it? What's going to be the consequences? We weren't challenging them, we were just trying to find out what's going to happen to us if we do, because if we don't, you know, we're going to lose everything. And we, I reached out to a lot of the other businesses in town, a lot of them that were considered essential. Bigger businesses, they didn't show, they didn't feel the need. We did have a few that showed in our support and gave their input. And I think out of that meeting is where the seed was kind of planted, that all our businesses in Kalinga are essential. When we left that meeting, the one thing we all agreed on was that we didn't depend on Fresno County. We sure as hell didn't rely on the state of California. We depended on each other. We depend on our family, our friends, our neighbors, and this community to survive. And we felt we could do that safely, we felt we could work together to make it happen, and we did. And we knew that we weren't looking 30 days away, 90 days away. We knew that if we didn't do something at that point, a lot of those 25 businesses that were represented would not have been there once the pandemic, when the all-clear whistle blew. And then where would Kalinga have been? Most of those businesses, I believe, are the heart and blood of this community. They're the names you see on the back of those football jerseys and the baseball jerseys and hanging on the banners on all the fences. That's not our Walgreens, that's our Mianids, that's our Fastgrip. You know, that's the pit stop, that's Fatty Albert's. Those are the ones we were going to lose if we didn't step up. So, like I said, out of that meeting, I think the seed was planted that we were all essential. And Adam wasn't the only one involved, but I know he did take the lead. People kind of razzed him about always being out in front, being in front of camera, being loud, being seen, being heard, but sometimes the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And we needed somebody that was standing up for us, saying, "We're here, do you see us now?" Because we needed that. Anyway, on behalf of, I have 25 businesses here that wanted to be on this more, that's all we could fit. I have this plaque for you, Adam, if you don't mind coming down. And it reads, "Kalinga City Councilman, District One, Adam Atkinson. In recognition of your dedication and support of local businesses during an unprecedented moment in our country's history, on behalf of many business owners, we want to thank you for being our voice when so few were listening. You were a leader when it was needed most, presented June 1st, 2023, with sincere appreciation. Good luck in all of your future endeavors." And the name tags on it are Real-Time Theater, Kalinga Auto and Diesel Repair, West Hills Machine Shop, Cafe 101, Faith Fellowship, Plants and Things, Los Reyes Mexican Grill, Image Beauty Salon, Heron Company, The Pit Stop, Calniva, Faith Christian Academy, Esperanza Insurance, Taqueria Gonzalez, Fatty Albert's Pizza, The Pink Parlor, Chevron Ice Bucket, Chavaria Income Tax Services, Tacos y Mariscos, Sergio's, and The Fitness Lab. Thank you, man, appreciate it. And one thing I do want to say is, you know, the work you've done as our council representative goes without being said. I know questions are, the gentleman has taken his seat, I'm going to age him right now, I've known him for probably close to 50 years, since we were playing in the dirt. He's going to do a great job, and I'm very happy where this council is headed, and I appreciate all you've done. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to public hearing. We have no items. Item number five, the consent calendar. Any items council would like to pull, discuss, load on? Okay, I'd like to pull item five and six, just briefly. Okay, item number five, the dog park update.
Number five is the animal shelter update.
Oh, sorry, animal shelter update.
You, do you have a question about it?
Are there, is there an expected start time and finish time?
There is not. So, the last update we had received was that the new animal shelter should be ready to go by the end of June. Were delayed by at least eight weeks because of the electrical engineer. And so, I don't have a estimated date of completion. I can just say that looking at the calendar, we're about eight weeks behind from where we should be, but it will likely end up being even longer than that.
Okay, and same thing with the Ramsey Park, the water park.
So, the water park, or the splash pad known as Ramsey Park, which is going to be in the vacant lot over on Cedar, that went out to bid, we did not receive any responsive bids with the budget that we had included. So, we removed the budget, and we did receive three bids. We've selected one with some minor changes, so we're hoping at the July 6th meeting, we'll be able to bring a plan to council.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, Mayor Horn, was that you who seconded?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Vosberg?
It was me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Atkinson. Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Okay, next item is ordinance, presentation, discussion, and potential action items. Our first one is presentation and discussion related to draft cycle six, multi-jurisdictional housing element. Sean?
I'm just going to do a quick intro from here, if that's okay with the council. So, tonight, we're, we are requesting, we're going to be providing a presentation to the city council by our consulting team of the public review draft of the multi-jurisdictional housing element. And the plan is to receive basically comments from the council, as well as any community members who have read the, or at least looked at the document during the public review period. So, the housing element is a state-required element of the general plan and is required by law to be completed every eight years. There are definitely benefits to making sure the housing element is completed each cycle and in time, such as eligibility for grant funding. Unfortunately, the consequences of inaction reach far, and the state has issued specific guidance to cities on the consequences of failing, falling short in adopting or otherwise complying with the housing elements. This can range from legal suits, loss of permitting authority, financial penalties, and court receivership. And so, in April, the city council authorized staff to participate in the Fresno County Multi-Jurisdictional Housing Element, which was a similar approach that was taken in the fifth cycle about eight years ago. So, Placeworks was retained by the participating jurisdictions to complete the sixth-cycle housing element. And they will be providing a presentation of the draft element to the council and anyone in attendance to gather feedback prior to its submission to the Department of Housing and Community Development for their review period. And so, in the presentation, Cynthia will be providing a kind of a timeline and also give an overview of the plan itself. So, with that, Cynthia's on Zoom, as you can see her on the screen, and I'll let Cynthia provide you an overview of the document.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, let me share my screen real quick. Does that look correct on your end? Okay, I'm going to assume yes. All right, so I have a short agenda. We're going to do an overview of the housing element, we'll talk about the outreach that has been done so far. We're going to talk a little bit about meeting the regional housing needs allocation, also known as the RENA. We'll touch on the assessment of fair housing, which is a new section in the housing element for the sixth cycle. And then we'll touch on the housing element programs, and then look at the schedule. So, as Sean mentioned, the purpose tonight is to provide an overview of the draft housing element and to receive input prior to submitting to the state Housing and Community Development Department, also called HCD. So, the housing element is one of the eight mandated elements of your general plan, and this document is updated every eight years. So, the current cycle is from December 31st, 2015, to December 31st, 2023. Your sixth-cycle housing element will run from December 31st, 2023, to December 31st, 2031, with a due date of December 31st of this year. And it does need to include a plan to accommodate the regional housing needs allocation. So, as you touched on, this is a unique housing element, it's the same format as your fifth cycle, but you do have items that were done on a regional basis. You can see that top blue box shows you all of the regional sections. There's an introduction, there was a regional outreach that was done. The housing needs assessment includes all of the jurisdictions within Fresno County, not just the city of Kalinga. It does kind of give you a good way to compare, you know, population, households, things like that, even housing costs. So, it's nice to have that regional aspect. It also includes a regional assessment of fair housing, looking at opportunities for residential development, housing constraints, and then goals and policies that are more regional. The local appendix is your housing element-specific sections. So, you do have your own action item and action plan, pardon me, and this includes all of your specific actions to complete over the next eight years. And we'll touch on the programs in just a little bit. It includes a sites inventory, which looks at all of the available land currently within the city limits to show how we can meet your arena. It has a local assessment of fair housing, so we have the regional, and then we have a local section. It has the local housing constraints, has a review of previous, and this is kind of a checks and balances of your fifth-cycle program. So, were they, what was the success in the implementation of those programs? And then there's also the public outreach that was done just for the city of Kalinga. This table shows you the outreach that has been done so far. We did complete stakeholder consultations, and these are one-on-one interviews with agencies to understand the needs of the community. Sometimes it's hard to get down to the individuals who need the assistance, who need, you know, with housing or things like that. So, we like to have these one-on-one interviews to really understand the needs of the community. There was also a joint planning commission city council meeting back in September, and this was just to introduce the housing element, kind of a housing element 101, what it is, what needs to be included with this, the sixth cycle. There was a local community workshop that was on October 5th. And then there were three regional focus groups. So, one was in last October, one was last November, one was just this last April on the 25th. And then we went to the planning commission on May 23rd, and then we are here this evening. So, how is the RENA determined? Obviously, the state, as I believe you all just went through this process, the state hands down a number to your COG. So, Fresno COG was allocated just over 58,000 units. That is then spread out between all of the jurisdictions, including the unincorporated counties. You can see that out of all of the 58,000 units, Kalinga was given 566. And that is spread across four different income categories, which we'll touch on in just a moment. So, this slide gives you an idea of how the units were distributed throughout the county. You can see, obviously, the city of Fresno taking on 63%, with Clovis following with 15, and then the rest ranging from about 1 to, 1 to 3, with unincorporated being 4%. And Kalinga representing just 1% of that overall RENA. So, this gives you kind of a breakdown of what the RENA is, the income range associated with each income category, the unit allocation, and the density needed. So, when we're looking at ways to meet your RENA, HCD wants to see, they tie density to affordability. So, they see higher-density products that are going to most likely be affordable to low, very-low-income households. A medium-density, around 14 to 17 units is what we are looking at for a moderate-income household. And then your more rural, single-family zones for your above-moderate or your market rate. You can see the different income categories, as I mentioned. So, very low is anything less than about $39,000 a year, and this is based off of a four-person household for 2022. 2023 income limits are not quite out. Your low income, that's going to be about $39,000 to $62,000. Moderate, anything under $80,000, and then above moderate, anything above $80,000. So, when we're looking at ways to meet the RENA, we start with the sites from the fifth-cycle element. What sites are still available, what developed and should come off the list? We also look at any potential pipeline projects, we can take credit for those based off of what we assume the rents or sales prices might be. We also try to focus on sites that are larger than a half of an acre and smaller than 10. There's been new legislation that if you are outside of that range, so anything larger than 10, smaller than a half of an acre, requires additional analysis. So, if we're able to, we try to stick within that range. We also look at both vacant and underutilized sites. And an underutilized site is a larger parcel that may have a single-family home with a lot of vacant land or a small shed, things like that. And then we're also looking at projecting accessory dwelling units. So, we can take an average of the last five years, what has been produced for ADUs, and then we can take an annual average and project that out over the next eight years to use some of those units to meet a portion of your RENA as well. I apologize, this map is a little bit small, hopefully it's larger on your screen than it is on mine. This shows you the site capacity to, and how we are meeting the RENA. So, you can see that our vacant site capacity for, is leading the charge there. With our underutilized, we're only relying on one parcel for 12 units for a market rate units there. You can see the majority, you know, the lower income is 514 units, 144 for moderate, 238 for above moderate, for a total of 897. And I should definitely state that it is not the city's responsibility to build these units. We are just inventorying what is currently available, zoned appropriately at varying densities. So, it's definitely not the city's responsibility to build these units, but you do need to plan for them and ensure that there are properties at different densities available if a developer was to come in. So, as I mentioned, projecting ADUs is a way that we are assuming to meet a portion of the RENA. The city has issued 27 ADUs, those were all in 2021. So, we are being conservative with this approach, and we are only assuming eight over the next eight years. We're assuming four of them will be above moderate, and four will be affordable to a moderate-income household. There's a lot going on with this table, so I'll walk you through it. On the far-left side, you can see the income category associated with the city's current RENA. Then you can see our vacant site capacity, our underutilized site capacity, the projected ADUs. And then the tan column shows you all of those added up for your total capacity. The far-right column shows you the surplus. So, we have a surplus of 261 units for your lower, which is termed, it's your very low and low, sometimes referred to as lower. Your moderate, we have a 60-unit surplus, and your above moderate, we have 30. It's always a good idea to have a little bit of a buffer or a surplus. That way, as projects come in and as they develop, and they may not fall into those affordable categories, that you do have some wiggle room, so that as that depletes, you're able to pull from your surplus. So, as I mentioned, AB 686- So as I mentioned, AB 686 is new law that came into play with the sixth cycle, and there, if you've looked at the document, it is a very large section. As I mentioned, there's a regional analysis of fair housing, which looks at more regional aspects, and then there's your local specifically looking at the city. So when we are doing this assessment, we are looking at patterns of integration and segregation. We're looking at income distribution, disabilities, demographic characteristics, things like that. We're also looking at displacement risk, so overcrowding, housing costs, homelessness, and housing conditions. We're looking at access to opportunities, so what's the transit like? What are the job opportunities, looking at environmental health, and then even school quality? And then there's other relevant factors such as public-private investment, land use patterns, local knowledge, and anti-displacement strategies. So when we completed our local analysis, these were the top findings that we identified. So there was a displacement risk for lower-income residents, a concentration of older homes that are often naturally more affordable. There's a disproportionate housing need for persons with disabilities, so there's a shortage of supportive housing units, limited transit, and high costs of accessibility modifications. And then last, there was limited access to services and resources, so limited transit again, and then some low school performance scores. So once we complete the housing needs assessment, the fair housing assessment, we identify different programs to move forward with in the sixth cycle. So we do have six goals for this housing element. We have 36 policies, and then we have 30 programs. And as I mentioned, the new programs, the modified programs are based off of the needs we've identified. They've also been included to address new state law. So looking at the programs to address new state law, we've included a program to address the needs of farmworkers, so ensuring that farmworker housing, six or fewer person, is treated just like a single-family housing unit, and then treating farmworker housing with 12 units or 36 beds just as an agricultural use. For transitional and supportive housing, these do need to be permitted as a residential use, just subject to the same restrictions as any other residential in that type. So if single-family is permitted, transitional and supportive must be permitted. If there's the CUP, then you can require a CUP for transitional and supportive. So we have a program to address those. Additional, we have low-barrier navigation centers, and these are shelter, these are service-rich shelters that are helping to get people back on their feet. So these need to be allowed by right in zones that allow for mixed use or non-residential zones that allow multifamily housing. Single-room occupancy units, these need to be allowed in at least one zone. You can require a conditional use permit there. And then for residential care facilities, regardless of the size, they need to be permitted just consistent with the city's definition of family. SB 166, this is what I was just mentioning about making sure that you have a surplus, so this is your no-net-loss law. So you need to ensure that you have capacity throughout the eight years to meet your arena. So as sites fall off, as sites develop, but they don't necessarily develop in those specific income categories, SB 166 holds you accountable there. AB 686, there is a large program included with different action items to show how you're going to help address the different needs that were identified in the fair housing assessment. And then the next few slides is kind of just an inventory of the different programs. So I won't read through all of them, but these are the new programs, again, to address new state law and to address any needs that we have identified in our analysis. So looking at farmworker preferences, extremely-low-income households, ensuring a variety of housing for a variety of needs, pardon me, environmental hazard mitigation, there's new SB 330 and SB 35 processes, objective design standards, and improving access to resources. Continued or modified, this means that this program was included in your last housing element, and we may have added additional outreach or updated the timeframe, funding source, things like that. So continue the regional collaboration, review annexation standards as those come forward, water and wastewater services, how you handle that, and zoning code amendments, which majority of those are to address new state law, which we just discussed. Few more continued modified programs, monitoring, planning, development fees, your code enforcement, the process there, continuing to work with Fresno County with the First-Time Home Buyer Assistance Program, energy conservation opportunities, housing choice vouchers, and housing discrimination monitoring and referrals. And now here's our schedule. So we did release the public review draft. There is a 30-day mandatory public review period, so that's running from May 10th through June 9th. Planning Commission meeting was on May 23rd to present the draft. We're here tonight to present the draft to the council, and our next step will be to submit the draft to HCD, and this is a 90-day review period, and they will take the full 90 days. So we will initiate that on June 26th. One thing with this cycle that's a little bit different than the fifth cycle is that HCD is taking more than one round of reviews. In some instances, it's three and four. So the sixth cycle is very different than the fifth cycle. So we are assuming that there will be another round with HCD, meaning the end of the 90-day review period, they will provide us with a findings letter. We will modify the housing element, and then we will resubmit for HCD to formally review those revisions. And then our plan is for adoption this next January, so we will be back then. And that is the end of my presentation.
Is this the comment time? So I just want to say that what I'm gonna say, I don't want to offend the lady that's up there, but this is absolutely the worst abuse of government power that I've ever seen. This is overreach to the max. This is where government comes in and forces us to do things without our control. These laws that have been passed with ADUs and JDUs and forcing multiple housing and single-family zoning is absolutely ridiculous. It's the worst type of legislation I've ever seen come from Sacramento. This is overreaching to the max. If we don't vote in favor of these policies, unfortunately, we're not voting for the policy itself, we're only voting for the document to be sent. I am 1,000% against this. The government has done us no favors but take away all local control and all local zoning control. I believe the League of Cities has been against this. There's a very small faction of people that control a mega group in Sacramento that have pushed this on top of all of us. They've created this housing tobacco problem themselves with all the policies that they've created, and now they're forcing all of us to live in the reality that they've created. And so even though I will be voting yes, it will be under complete duress, and this is the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen. So, and I did read the whole document.
Any other comments, counsel? This is, I believe this was informational only, correct?
It is, but we do need direction to submit it to HCD for review.
What would counsel like to do?
I guess I'll make the motion to push this forward. There's, I mean, we have cities being sued right now over this. Cities have already been sued, and there's groups of roaming lawyers and groups that are following the state and people that do not do this. And I believe it's Huntington Beach right now has already lost their lawsuits. I think it's 3.8 million, and they've already asked the feds to step in. I don't see the feds stepping in to help them. If something changes in the future, we could always, you know, go back and revert to other things, but I don't see that happening, so unfortunately. Under duress, I will make the motion that we continue on with this process.
I'll second that. Same view. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye, under duress also.
Councilman Atkinson?
Nothing got me all fired up. Take a stand over here, man. I'm gonna say no. Someone's gotta say no. That'll be me.
Okay, we'll move on to item two, discussion, direction, and potential action regarding filling remaining vacant appointments for District 1 and District 5 of the City of Colinga Public Safety City Beautification Code Enforcement, Animal Control Transparency, and Accountability Committee. Marissa?
Thank you. This item is back on the agenda because we did not fill the full committee. This is one of the, well, this is the only committee that requires two community members for each district. And so for District 1, you appointed Justin Milligan. For District 2, Vanna Darnell and Richard Hill. For District 3, we still have no applicants. District 4 is Tom Dominguez and Jess Rosales, and District 5 is Jim Allen. Since those appointments, we have had some additional applications come in, and you didn't choose a second appointee for District 1 at that time because you didn't know who you were going to appoint to the council seat. So your options tonight for District 1 are the applicants from the previous meeting, Mary Jones, Taylor Monroy Sizneros, and Rocco Papietro. And additionally, Dawn Kikina has expressed interest. And then for District 5, Ron Ramsey has submitted an application for the District 5 appointment.
Well, we gotta let Ron on.
Okay, so the first one we need to discuss then is District 1. Who would you guys like to appoint?
We only need one more, right?
Yes, we need one more.
I just want to say all these people are good choices. I don't, I don't, I don't have anything other than that to say.
We do have a lot of good choices, and Dawn comes down to all the meetings, so if she's interested, the other, so does, I'm sorry, Mary, you're here every time also.
I'm not, not because I'm interested.
But you're working.
So I know Mary will be here anyways because she's gonna report on it, so I'm leaning towards Dawn, because I know Dawn's done a lot of stuff with the public safety, and I'm praying that Mary is gonna come. Oh, my goodness.
Okay, so we need to vote on this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we need to make a motion on, so which one are we gonna, let's do, let's do each one first, a vote. So we'll start off with...
Hey, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we table this until our new council member is seated? That would be the fair thing to do, I think.
Yeah, we could do that.
Is everyone okay with that?
Okay.
Sure, on one, but, you know, let Ron in since he's the only other one.
On District 1, if we could...
Okay, so let's move to 5 real quick.
Make a motion for Ron Ramsey.
I'll second that. Do we need a roll call?
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
And then, sorry, I just want to point out so that the community knows what we still need. We need two applicants for District 3, and then we need applicants for the Sales Tax Committee. That will be on the next agenda if we have any candidates. Scott Netherton's volunteered, so he can be considered at the next meeting for the Sales Tax Committee, and then anyone else who's interested can also apply, as well as the Public Safety Committee for District 3.
Can I ask a question? If we go another round and we don't have anybody, can we take the remaining applicants and fill the committee in the goal of just filling the committee? Because, I mean, we have people that are putting their names in the hats, and I think that would all be good, and we have a situation where we don't. In fact, you know, District 3 is my district, and I've tried to get people to do that, and so I'd be willing to put those folks in my district. I know this was the chief's item, but if it pleased the chief, then we could get this
I am going to be selecting representatives from the school district and some businesses, so it'll be three or four that will be added to this list for the districts. And I'm not sure in what districts it'll be living at, but just let you know.
So would the council care if we took the people that applied for, that we chose one person from District 1 and then filled the others into District 3? That way, that the people that all put their names in the hats could get in?
Are we able to do that?
Yes, if that's what council chooses. I can add that for the next agenda.
That way, at least we have, we have a group that's already wanting to be there.
Right, because we've put this out, I think, three times, and I've actually walked in District 3 to try and find people, and unfortunately, people are afraid of the time, so...
So the next meeting will make that decision, correct? Once we decide at the next meeting with the new council?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, item number three, discussion and direction to staff relating to amending setback requirements for reverse corner lots.
This is a future agenda item that was requested by Councilman Atkinson related to amending setbacks for accessory structures on reverse corner lots. In the background of the staff report, I provided some information regarding our current standards for reverse corner lots. And for the council and the audience, if they're not familiar with what a reverse corner lot is, it's a, it's a lot where a home is typically on a corner, but the front of the house faces an opposite street as the house that's on its rear. And so they call, so for instance, I think the house on Pacific and Monterey, there's also one on Washington, and I can't remember what the other street is. But the houses face one street, the rear part of the lot is basically the side yard of what they call the key lot. And so I put some information here, what that is, what the current standard is, and staff's just thinking some additional detail in terms of what is being requested or what it would require a zoning tax amendment for this to allow that related to accessory structures. So with that, Councilman Atkinson or any other council, if you guys want to provide a little bit more detail in terms of what the council would like to accomplish with the change.
I believe the code right now is 40 feet. Is that what it is?
So currently, the way that the code operates says is that reverse corner lots shall have a minimum street-side yard of 12 feet or the required front yard of the lot or the key lot. So if your house faces, for instance, Washington and another house, and your house faces, I'm sorry, like Colinga Street, and the house that's next to you faces Washington, the setback for the actual home is 12 feet or whatever the front yard of that adjacent home is. So basically, it's so the house that's on the corner doesn't have a side yard all the way and basically blocking the corner on the house that faces the other street. It's kind of hard to explain. I don't have a laser pointer, but Larry, if you pull up the staff report, you can see our, I put a copy of the standard in our code. So essentially, it's, one addresses the setback of the house on a reverse corner lot, and then also talks about that no accessory structure shall project beyond the extension of the required front yard of that key lot. So basically, in the example, so you can see the reverse corner lot, the A, B, and C, the C is the accessory structure, that it can't project further out from the front yard setback of the key lot, because technically, that would be the rear yard of the house on the left and the side yard of the key lot. So the goal is to try to keep the setbacks, any structures not, that they don't encroach in front of the front yard setback of the key lot. So typically, with a reverse corner lot, you'll see a lot more frontage in front lot, front yard area or side yard area in order to avoid having that. Now, we don't have setbacks for fences, so fences, as you've seen probably on reverse corner lots in town, that fences are out there, but the way the code's written, it does not allow for any accessory structures to be placed in those setbacks.
This comes down to one house that we're talking about.
This comes down to one house that we're talking about, you already know which one it is, right? So you, you're saying that they can have a fence there now?
The fence...
The ones that they want to build?
The fences, the fence can be built out, there's no setback requirement for the fence, and we've had this issue on other reverse corner lots where fences can be built out, as long as they meet the corner cutoffs, and they're not blocking the, the standards for a corner cutoff for folks entering and exiting intersections. So fences are permitted, but the way the code is written, that there's no, no accessory structures can be constructed within that setback.
Because I was under the impression that he was told he could not build the fence, and that's why this is being brought forward, because he could not build the fence. It had to be forty feet from...
It was, it was related, it was related to a shed.
So he can still build a fence, but he just can't build the shed?
That's the way the code's written, because I know we've gone through this on the property on Pacific Street, verifying, because you have, you have building setbacks, and you ha, and you have specific fence setbacks. Now, the city does not have specific fence setbacks, other than height restrictions based on where the fence is located. So in the front yard, it's three feet, in the side, and rear yard, it's six feet. But with setbacks, there's no setback requirement for fence, so fences can be built on the back of the, at the property line. But structures...
You know where he wants to build it, can he build a six-foot fence there?
Yes.
Okay.
So can it, can the structure be built beyond the fence? So like, let's say the fence is on the line, but then they want to, and the line is, you know, right there, but then the structure is not within the setback, can they still build the structure, or no?
The structure has to be, has to follow the setback requirements for buildings and for the structures or accessory structures, the fence is separate, the fence is different.
So even though your fence is typically on your property, then the setback goes beyond the fence level?
Setback is where, is basically, so if we start talking about setbacks, setbacks are where you're, where you can build a structure. So setbacks in the front yard, it varies based on certain zones, but it could be fifteen, twenty feet. So you have to leave, that's why if you don't have setbacks, then you'd have houses right at the front of the property line, on the side yard. So street-side usually is ten feet.
But you're saying that the, that the fence could be right on the line?
But the fence, the fence is not subject to the setback, it's the buildings.
But let's say you had a fence, and it's on the line, and then it's your backyard, and you want to put a shed, two feet from that fence, the fence is already, is already in the way, so what's the difference?
You have building setbacks, so the setback would be probably five feet. Because you have building sub, you have separ, the setbacks is not only for building separation, but it's also for maintaining continuity between, you know, where you have buildings, or where buildings are located on the street, in terms of neighborhoods. If you have some that might be right up to the front of the curb, you might have some that are forty feet back. But there are minimum setbacks to create what they call a building envelope, where you can actually place a structure, for your primary structure, and then accessory structures can be placed in different areas as well, and subject to setbacks.
Okay, I just wanted to understand it, and now that I understand it, you have a whole bunch of houses in town that have their sheds right on the fence line, so obviously they're not following the rules, so just want to point that out.
No, there, there are a lot of, and a lot of legal non-conforming structures throughout town that, yeah, yes, we deal with. And if there, if permits are, are requested, then we address those and ensure that the setbacks are adhered to when they, when they build that. There are other require, there are some requirements that if it's in the rear part of the lot, that it can be closer to property lines, especially with, if they're off the alley. I don't have all the exact codes in my head, but, you know, typically, it's a lot closer to the property line. But for sep, for setbacks, a lot of it has to do with separation of, of buildings, and also from streets, and making sure that you have visibility. If you have a, if you put zero setbacks on a house and put it right on the corner, you can't see around the corner. So you have to ensure that you have proper clearances, and being able to make sure you have that continuity.
Okay, thank you.
This one, I believe, is informational on this item. This one's informational. Do we need to act on this tonight?
It's up to you guys.
I do have a question, though, is this, does this include apartments, small apartments or duplexes?
They all have, yeah, so depending on the zone that they're, that they're being developed in, so it's medium-density residential, high-density residential, single-family residential, they'll have different setbacks, and different requirements for the development stan, the different development standards for those different districts.
Okay.
So when somebody's building a shed, let's say, under a hundred-and-twenty square foot, a small shed, it, it doesn't have to be permitted, right?
Doesn't need to be permitted, no.
Still supposed to follow the standards, but you, people don't pull permits for small sheds. When you're talking about building a structure somebody's living in, or a garage that would impede vision, that's where all these setback rules come from. So when, I think you're talking about all the small sheds around town that are up against a fence, it's because the people didn't necessarily pull a permit. But I know for a fact, when I built my gazebo, I had to pull a permit, and it was specifically setback fifteen foot from the road, and we've had to measure, so it's a...
It's similar to fencing. Fences don't require permits, but there's also requirements for height where they can be located. So there's always that, there's zoning regulations that aren't directly attributed to a building permit, where we have to oversee that, it's just something that sometimes folks have to know, or just call and ask if they have a question about where they're placing something.
Any more questions? I think we're done, thank you, Sean.
Thanks.
Okay, next item, number four, discussion, direction, and potential action regarding replacing dais chairs in council chambers. That was brought forward by Councilman Ramirez, and we'll have Marissa.
Thank you, so I'll try to keep this quick. Mayor Pro Tim Ramirez requested a future agenda item to replace the chairs up here. These chairs are very old, I don't know how long they've been here, but they've seen better days, they're very squeaky, and they don't feel sturdy, and they're kind of dirty. So I've listed five chair options on here, you can choose one, or you can say that you don't like any of them, and for us to bring back other options.
I have personal experience with number three and four, and they don't last, they break, especially with somebody big in them. So number five works, because it is cleanable, it's not cloth, in my opinion.
Is that a motion for number five?
Yeah, a motion for number five.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
I love the chain of events that have happened, because there was a time four years ago when I brought this up, and I'm never gonna stop talking about this. I got my butt handed to me for bringing this up. Anyways, yes, finally, and I don't even get to sit in on it.
Mayor Horn?
And I vote aye. Okay, next, we'll move on to announcements, city manager.
Thank you, I only have one. We are starting a new program this summer called Fridays with Fire. The information is on the city Facebook page, as well as the fire department's Facebook page, but I want to cover what's gonna be happening in June, because we won't have another council meeting before then. So June sixteenth at ten AM, there will be a station tour at the fire department. June twenty-third at three PM will be storytime at the library, and June thirtieth at nine AM will be disc golf at Keck Park. And again, all, children of all ages and abilities are welcome, but you do have to stay with them, the fire department's not a daycare, so you can't just drop them off and leave, there has to be a responsible party staying with them.
Okay, any council reports? None, and I have none as well. Any future agenda items?
Hold on, I want to see if, maybe, I can't really, never mind, I'll tell Nathan what I want, and maybe he'll put it up as a future agenda item.
I, I do have one. Once we get all the citizens seated and staff seated in the workshops, can we bring them to a meeting so that everybody can meet them?
Yeah, we can put that as a future agenda item.
Okay, we have, next is closed session, we have two items for closed session. Other than that, our meeting is adjourned till the beginning of July.